Well, good morning, everybody. Good to see you. I want to welcome you to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. Welcome those that are joining us online on social media, on Facebook and YouTube, and those that are joining us here in person. We're glad you're here. When you walked in, we'd like to remind you, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. Encourage you to grab one of those and follow along with us. If you're curious about any of the supporting documentation that commissioners have as they review each of these line items, we encourage you to check that at sedgwickcounty.org. All the supporting documents are there. We encourage you to look through all of it. It's a good, good read. Make a couple of acknowledgements before we get started today. I want to acknowledge Valley Center Councilmember Matt Stam is here today. Welcome, sir. Glad you're joining. And we've got some really good proclamations today. One very good proclamation today and award being given today. So we're excited that you're here. And if you haven't noticed yet, there is a new look behind the bench today. We also want to welcome to their first meetings Commissioner Jeff Bluebaum, Commissioner Stephanie Weiss. We are glad you guys are joining us, excited and looking forward to a new year. So, that being said, as both of you said on Sunday in your speeches after you were sworn in, let's get to work. Madam Clerk, we're going to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, January 15th, 2025. First item, please.
Indication to be observed by a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Fox Loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Weiss.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Bluebaum.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. It is never too early to think about your voter registration status. For those voting in the February USD 259 bond election, the last day to register or update your voter registration is Tuesday, February 4th. You can register online, by mail, or in person at the Sedgwick County Election Office. If you have already registered but have moved or changed your name, you will need to update your information on file. All the details are available on our website at sedgwickcounty.org/elections. Mother Nature is continuing to ignore my pleas for 24/7 summer weather and is expected to send an Arctic blast our way this weekend. For people like me who despise being cold, heaters and fireplaces have become our friends. However, keep in mind the dangers of carbon monoxide, also known as CO. Each year, more than 400 Americans die from unintentional CO poisoning. CO is called the invisible killer because it's colorless, odorless, it's a colorless, odorless poisonous gas undetectable to the human senses, so people may not know they are being exposed. CO poisoning can occur when a fuel-burning appliance, when a fuel-burning appliance or machine such as furnace, heater, or generator is not working or vented properly. Fire District 1 encourages residents to install CO alarms inside your home to provide early warning. Use portable generators outdoor in a well-vented area away from doors, windows, and vents. And make sure vents for the dryer, furnace, stove, and fireplaces are clear of snow and other debris. And last but not least, Sedgwick County offices will be closed Monday, January 20th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. As always, emergency services are available by calling or texting 911. And that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Nicole? You don't like the cold, huh?
No.
Okay, I second that much.
Absolutely not.
Okay, thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, as usual. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, we had one individual sign up for public agenda. We just invite you, when your name is called, sir, to come on down to the podium. You have five minutes. If you can state your name and address for the record, we would certainly appreciate that. First up, and the only gentleman signed up today on public agenda, is Michael Andra. Thanks, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael Andra, address 110 South Forestview Court, Wichita, Kansas 67235. I won't take much time of yours, I just want to bring my point to the commissioners. But anyway, I've given you just a cover letter. A lot of talk about property taxes and whatnot. My concern particularly aren't property taxes and valuations, but as my letter says, I'll just simply read it into the record. Commissioners, I come before you as a very concerned resident, business, and property owner of Sedgwick County. I feel our county appraisers office is out of control. Since 2022, that department has and continues to violate state statutes as it relates to the appraisal of real property and the appeal process. I've attached a partial list of violations and dates occurred. That office brags about a 99% success rate in real property appraisals. I suggest that rate is highly influenced by their abuse of the taxpayers and conduct at appeal hearings. I'm well-schooled in this process with over 40 years' experience in multiple counties. I would request a full and complete investigation, as an April 10th meeting with Sarah Lopez and Tom Stoles about these matters only resulted in further violations by that office. I would suggest our county seriously consider establishing a county hearing panel as permitted in KSA 791611 to keep the oversight of the appraiser on the local level. I've attached some of the appropriate statutes that govern real property appraisals and appeals. Thank you. And once again, Michael Andra, owner, US 107.9 FM radio, and the Wichita Union Stockyards Event Center.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andra, appreciate your comments. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Andra, thank you for coming today. I really appreciate you highlighting some of these concerns on that review panel that you just talked about. I've been an advocate for that for years. I actually think that is what we need to do. Some counties do, in fact, do that, as it is allowed under statute. And I think that ultimately, the taxpayers need to come before their elected officials when they have problems. We ought to have a say, I think, in what actually happens in terms of these types of issues. And so I would love to raise the topic once again. We largely have a different commission sitting on the bench today. I think it's time for us to maybe talk about what exactly is that, how does it work? I think a fresh discussion is warranted. So thank you for your reminder of this idea. I would be an advocate for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bluebaum.
Okay. Thank you. We've had this discussion several times before, and I completely agree. I'd like to ask Tom, is there any way we could put together a meeting with myself and Mr. Andra and the county appraiser, and we could kind of talk through some of the issues he got and look for some best practices? Like, I think that's how we used to do it, is having a commissioner there on the panel, so maybe revisit that.
Yeah, Commissioner, we can set that up. Also, if we have an additional copy of what you handed the commission for the clerk, and then a copy for Mark Clark, too. So we'll get that set up, sir.
Okay, good. Does that work? Yep. Okay, and I'll make sure we have copies here, and just so the public is aware that we'll submit this into the public document so that the public is aware of the letter and the supporting documents. We appreciate that. Justin, if you wouldn't mind, the review, the statute that was referenced, would you be able to draft a memo of sorts and educate the commission on what it is we're looking at?
Certainly, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Andra, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming and sharing.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, that concludes public comment. I'll make a motion to receive a file.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Bluebaum.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
Okay, very good. Very important proclamation with a very wonderful organization here that will be receiving it. This is a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas each year, human trafficking deprives thousands of men, women, and children of their freedom, dignity, and human rights. And whereas aggravated human trafficking is the recruiting, harboring, transporting, providing, or obtaining by any means a person under 18 years of age knowing that the person, with or without force, fraud, threat, or coercion, will be used to engage in forced labor, involuntary servitude, or sexual gratification of the defender or another. This is defined in KSA 21-5426. And whereas victims of human trafficking are lured, forced, or coerced for the purpose of commercial sex, debt, bondage, or forced labor. Labor trafficking is the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services using force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas, Sedgwick County is fortunate to have a dedicated multidisciplinary response to human trafficking, which incorporate prevention, intervention, and restoration through the partnership of nonprofit, medical, law enforcement, and social service agencies. And whereas ICT SOS is proudly opening its doors to the community at a new location on January 16th, 2025, to provide a more broad spectrum of services and to reach a larger target population, denoting a significant contribution to our local community. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month here in Sedgwick County, and we encourage the residents of our community to strongly commit to come together to combat human trafficking. Commissioners, you have heard the proclamation. I move to approve as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Bluebaum.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept the proclamation is Jennifer White, the Executive Director of ICT SOS. Jennifer, welcome. We're glad to hear.
Well, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. First of all, congratulations to the newly elected members, and thank you to those of you continuing to serve on the commission and in county staff. We look forward to partnering together to continue to see Sedgwick County grow and improve. My name is Jennifer White, and I'm the Executive Director of ICT SOS, an anti-human trafficking nonprofit proudly serving our city since 2011. As you are aware, January is Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. Sedgwick County, like many communities, is not immune to this crime. It happens in cities, small towns, and rural areas of our state. With me today are professionals who work diligently every day to create a safer community for all who live here. In their various roles, they also serve the needs of survivors. Sedgwick County is fortunate to have a multidisciplinary team of organizations dedicated to the prevention, intervention, and restoration of survivors of trafficking, abuse, and exploitation. This team consists of local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies, medical partners from clinics and hospitals, social workers, therapists, and advocates from child and adult serving agencies, board members, volunteers, and donors from every walk of life. I speak on behalf of the group today to extend our gratitude to the county commission for recognizing Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and I implore you to connect with these organizations and learn more about how they are serving, where the gaps are, and how we can come together as a city to see an end to the exploitation of our neighbors. ICT SOS is excited to announce the Our Place campaign to open our new expanded location. Through a partnership with the Rotarians Against Human Trafficking Committee, Our Place quickly moved from a dream to reality. ICT SOS moved into the new building at 126 South Ida earlier this month and will host a symbolic groundbreaking event on January 30th. We would welcome your attendance at this celebration as we cast the vision for what ICT SOS will become over the next several years. Thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you to my colleagues, both here in the room with us today and those who weren't able to join us here, because this work never takes a break. And I'd also like to extend a special thank you to county staffer Sabrina Young for handling the administrative duties to get the proclamation on today's agenda. As we know, the real heroes are often behind the scenes. And I'll stand for questions.
Yeah, Jennifer, thank you so much. And thank you for acknowledging Sabrina and the work of staff to get this move forward.
I appreciate it.
A couple of questions. What, how big is the trafficking problem here in Wichita? I think this is one of those discussions that never really comes to light, and we think this is happening in other places across the world or across the country. Can you give some indication of what we're dealing with here in Wichita?
So it's kind of a loaded question. There are things that circulate that say Wichita is number this or number that in the nation. We do not know. We have a good idea of what we're seeing as far as numbers. I sit on the Human Trafficking Advisory Board for the state through the Attorney General's Office, and one of the subcommittees that I sit on is the Data Collection Subcommittee. So we are actually working at a statewide level to create a data collection database, which doesn't exist at this point yet. I will say, we know that we have this issue in Wichita and in Sedgwick County, just like any other community our size. You'll hear things sometimes, well, you know, you have 35 and 70. So does every other community. That's how highways work, right? So I don't know that we're necessarily more at risk than other communities our size, but we don't want to be at risk at all. So from our end of things, where I feel like we really have a lot of opportunity to kind of move the needle is on the prevention side, and so we work really hard in the schools to get information out to the kids about what does this look like, what does online safety look like, how does that play into this, and try to stop it before it starts.
Yeah, very good. Your new building, your new location, what services do you guys do there? And what I always appreciate about your organization is you understand the need for confidentiality. So ask a question and you can't answer it, and I understand. How many people, what are you going to be doing? What services or expanded services in this new location? But how many people do you typically serve a year?
So through our education programs, we're serving roughly around 5,000 kids a year. Through our advocacy programs, and Olivia, our advocates in the room with us, we were, what, around 60 survivors last year?
Wow.
Adult survivors, 18 and over. We work really closely with the Child Advocacy Center for our kiddos, and then we pick up kind of 18 and over. So with the new location, we're going from about 5,500 square feet to about 13,000, which is a little overwhelming, but it will allow us to have onsite therapy offices. We're contracted with four therapists that provide different services. We do support group. It'll allow us to have some more educational opportunities, both for survivors as well as the community. We get asked a lot if we do parent classes because we're in the schools, so that's something that we're hoping to add in that space. One thing that I'm really excited about, we're actually subleasing a portion of the space out to Wichita Recovery Hub for the first year. So they will have space in our building, and they work with folks in recovery. They're a new organization, so this will allow them to kind of launch. And selfishly, there's some great crossover for us, because a lot of our survivors have a history with addiction and need recovery services, so that puts them literally right next door to us.
Beautiful. People want to learn more if they need to find you for help. How do they do that?
ICTSOS.org.
Yeah. Commissioner Bluebaum.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Last year, I was able to participate in a roundtable with Senator Marshall, and I really appreciated the collaboration that's going on, and hopefully that continues, because I've noticed that, you know, with a lot of the different trafficking organizations, even, you know, the Sheriff's Department, WPD, KBI, just want to make sure everyone's talking and we're utilizing all of our resources we can, and there's no disconnects, because the job you guys are doing is so important, and got to keep it up. So thank you so much.
It's a very big job and lots of room for lots of folks at the table. We actually coordinate a quarterly, for lack of a better term, an MDT, Multidisciplinary Team Meeting, where we do bring in our partners with FBI, Homeland Security, local law enforcement, medical, social work, kind of all of the domestic violence shelters for housing. So it is a very multidisciplinary effort, and
Yes, it is.
None of us have the answer to the whole picture, so we all got to come to the table together.
That's good. Thank you. Jennifer, you're always so good with your team, and you have some of your team here today. Would you be able to maybe just say who's here today so that we could honor them, too?
Yeah, for sure. Olivia's our advocacy coordinator. Marty is our education coordinator, so she oversees our programs in the schools, and Katie is one of our education facilitators. Shelby is our development assistant, and then Jessica and Callie are both social work students at WSU. Jessica is in the MSW program, and Callie is in the BSW program, so they're doing their practicum with us this year.
Beautiful. Well, you're superheroes. Thank you for what you do in this community. We really appreciate you guys.
Thanks.
Okay, and Jennifer, you can hang tight after the next presentation. We'll get a picture out in the stairwell, okay? Thank you again. Okay, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, Part 1. Item B, Presentation of the Chairman's Award.
Okay, Chairman's Award. Each year, by tradition, with the county commission, is the chairman gets to choose an organization or an individual that they deem as accomplishing incredible things in this community. This year, with the privilege of the seat, is I got to choose an organization that I am deeply, deeply, deeply impacted by and appreciate, and that's the Stand Together Foundation. So I'm going to come down here to the podium and join some friends of mine doing big things in this community to say a few words, to hear from them, and then to give them an award. So. Come on up, guys. Here we go. Thanks, man. Thank you. I'd like to read just the press release and then just share some personal thoughts, and then I want to hear from you guys, too. So we sent out a press release from Sedgwick County, written, said, "Today, as Chairman of the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners, Ryan Beatty presented the 2024 Chairman's Award to Stand Together, a nonprofit founded in 2003 that tackles the root causes of many serious issues facing our nation. Its philanthropic community collaborates with dozens of bold changemakers to create a support solutions system. In Sedgwick County, Stand Together has actively engaged local social entrepreneurs focused on transforming K through 12 of education, affordable housing, addiction recovery, and other pressing issues. In choosing Stand Together for the Chairman's Award, I want to elevate an organization that cares deeply about our community and is willing to provide resources towards grassroots transformative solutions. I personally worked closely with Stand Together on issues related to foster care and vulnerable families, and our partnership has led to the launch of the Care for Every Family Network." So that was the press release that went out today, and I just want to share with the community and those here today why your organization means so much to me personally. As an entrepreneur and as a business owner, I became familiar with this concept of a social entrepreneur about 10 or 12 years ago. And a social entrepreneur realizes that the aim of their business and with their employees and the things that they do within their business is more than just profit. It's more than just running an organization and paying the bills, that an entrepreneur in their business actually has capacity to impact the community in profound ways. And I got acquainted with several people, not just from Stand Together, but people in this community that are also engaged in this concept of what it means to be a social entrepreneur. And as Stand Together really began to take root here in this community, we started to see that issues that were really prevailing and significantly impacting families in this community, that the solutions were complex, and the solutions weren't readily available by government's intervention. So what I appreciate so much about Stand Together and the people that are standing with me today is they realize that transformation and reform happens best at the grassroots level. It happens from the community. The government has a role in some things, but what really profound impact and profound change comes from the community itself, and they have led a charge to do exactly that. I want to share one story, and then I want you to, I'm going to give this award to you, but I want to hear your hearts, too. Two years ago, Joe Woodward called me, and just from the work, and I see Jay Hedrick here, a social worker that's very active in the foster care community. He called me and said, "Hey, we're flying somebody in that deals with family welfare issues, and she wants to talk to you about the foster care crisis in Wichita. Are you willing to just sit and chat?" And, you know, that's a softball. It's like, yeah, you bet. So we go and sit in a room, a coffee shop, they rented a room, and this lady was all business. And I walk in, and she says, "Give me the two-minute Cliff Notes version why we should invest dollars into impacting the foster care situation here in Sedgwick County." And I gave her the two-minute Cliff Notes version and did the best I could, and she said something to me that literally changed what I believe to be the entire predicament of foster care in this community. She says, "What if we have a network of people that are wanting to take a bigger bite of the apple? Could we do it?" And from that, and from those conversations, this network of people launched something called the Care for Every Family Network, and is legitimately, with the support of DCF and the support of dozens and dozens of churches and community partners, are literally reforming the foster care situation in Sedgwick County. And Stand, absolutely. You can clap. It's good. One of the biggest catalysts of all that work is this organization here, Stand Together. So you are deserving of this award. You are deserving of respect. I want people to know all that you're doing, and not just in the foster care space, but also throughout the community with other social entrepreneurs. So on behalf of myself, but also on the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners and the Sedgwick County Government, I want to recognize Stand Together Foundation for your outstanding service to Sedgwick County and as a recipient of the 2024 Chairman's Award. Joe?
Chairman, thank you. Thank you.
Joe, would you say a few things and introduce the team?
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, Chairman, thank you. We are deeply honored for the award, but really just the support and engagement of the community. We've got some big challenges as a community. Typically, when we see big challenges, we think about big solutions that are typically far away, but typically what works best are the bottom-up solutions in community. We saw one of them today from ICT SOS, a social entrepreneur who's finding new and better ways of solving big problems, and this community is full of people like that. A few of them are here behind me today. We've got Nima Mosala, who leads a lot of our work in youth aging out of foster care system. We've got Corinneian Kelly, does a ton of good work in neighborhoods and fatherhood. Sarah Andrews is wearing the T-shirt and launched the Care for Every Family movement with so many in this room. So we are deeply honored. One more just kind of vision piece here. So 18 months from now, America has a pretty big birthday, 250 years old. We'll be celebrating our country, but more importantly, we'll be celebrating the ideas of America that were written down in the Declaration of Independence, ideas that Commissioner Beatty spoke about today, freedom, dignity, the entrepreneurial spirit, and we believe these ideals are still alive. And we're also so bold to think that a mid-sized, scrappy community like Wichita could be a model for these ideas. So we've got a lot of work to do over the next 18 months as a community, and we are just thrilled to be here. So thank you.
Yeah, Joe. Thank you, Joe. One second, we've got some questions from commissioners. Commissioner Howe.
I just want to say thank you for what you do, your whole team. I'm completely blown away at your heart and your success, and I just want to say thank you for what you do. And I think it compels us to ask a couple more questions.
Sure.
If someone wants to give money, or someone wants to check out your website, or someone wants to get involved, where can they get information, on the web or a phone number? How do they engage their opportunities to help you guys?
Absolutely. So standtogether.org is the best place to go for all of those, and thank you very much.
Well, I wish you the very best. My heart is also for foster kids. One of the reasons I'm here on this bench today is because of juvenile justice issues in our community. It's a very big topic. It's very complicated and difficult, and to know there's organizations like Stand Together that are working hard to help the children, basically, that are neglected and abused, that's what they are. We need people to stand up and stand together. Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, Joe, can you, we talked a lot about just the foster care initiative with Stand Together, the Care for Every Family Network. What else, what other issues are you working on locally?
Yeah.
And how many partners are you working with?
Oh, gosh, more than 100 folks that kind of in collaboration with. We've got about 30 close, like funded partners, and I think the sort of theme throughout is these kind of, this principle-based way of solving problems, this kind of entrepreneurial spirit, and you see this all over the place in different sectors. So a great example are education entrepreneurs who are convening at Learning Lab Wichita downtown. They recognize that, again, one-size-fits-all is not a way to go about solving problems. It doesn't work in poverty, doesn't work in foster care, it also doesn't work in education. And again, the solution are micro-solutions, bottom-up. And again, it's been a really neat deal at Learning Lab, because we've got public school teachers, private school teachers, religious organizations, secular organizations, all kind of identifying as education entrepreneurs, finding their piece to the puzzle.
So you've got poverty, K through 12 education, housing.
So you've got poverty, K through 12 education, housing, there's a big, there's some big news coming in what you guys are doing in the housing front here with affordable housing. Can you name some of the partners that you work with?
Oh, I mean, we could spend all day. Some of my favorites are Hope for the Hood, Hope CDC, doing affordable housing, Hope for the Hood, former gang members rebuilding Northside neighborhoods. We mentioned Learning Lab, we mentioned Care Portal, Create Campaign, doing amazing work in entrepreneurship, a new partnership with United Way to transform the Loop 211 system, really treating that as a customer call center with follow-ups and individualized recommendations. There's so many pieces, but that central kind of idea is entrepreneurial spirit to solve big problems to empower people to reach their potential.
Yep. Also Shepherd's Way, too, one of my favorite development on disability organizations.
Yes.
We appreciate the work you do. You are worthy of recognition, you're worthy of an honor, and you're certainly worthy of the 2024 Chairman's Award, so God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you all.
If you guys could give us about a five-minute break, we're going to go outside. I want to take some pictures with ICT SOS to celebrate the proclamation and then this chairman's award. Just give us about five minutes. Okay, thank you very much for the patience to be able to honor ICT SOS for that proclamation and Stand Together, two wonderful organizations doing really, really big things in this community, so thank you for your patience. Back to work we go. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, 2025 City of Wichita, Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce, Sedgwick County Regional Economic Area Partnership of South Central Kansas, and Wichita State University Joint Legislative Platform.
Can we pause real quick? I need to circle back to item B and move to receive and file the presentation. Can you give me a second? Yeah, thanks. Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Blubow.
Here.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, now back to item C. Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I am here today to present you with the final version of the Joint Legislative Platform. So there has been some work in the last couple of months in the background on this Joint Legislative Platform. This is a legislative platform that collaborates and unites Sedgwick County with our local partners, including the City of Wichita, Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce, Greater Wichita Partnership, the Regional Economic Area Partnership of South Central Kansas, and happily added this year includes Wichita State University. This platform focuses our efforts on policies and resources with a theme of economic development, housing, and infrastructure, all of which are important to our community in the South Central region. In early December, these partners came together, which included Chairman Beatty and our county manager, to form this legislative platform with six very distinct priorities in which they're asking the legislature's support. Under economic development, we have support education, childcare, and workforce development policies that spur job creation and talent recruitment and retention in South Central Kansas, as well as support policies that enhance economic expansion to boost the economy and catalyze local and regional economic development and job opportunities, and enhance the quality of life for everyone in South Central Kansas. Under housing, we have two: support the adoption of solutions, resources, and policies that recognize homelessness as a growing statewide issue, and support policies and tax credit options that encourage the development of housing options for all South Central residents, including investment and housing affordability and in urban settings. Under infrastructure, we also have two: support water policies that promote responsible stewardship, conservation, contamination solutions, and an abundant and healthy water supply, and also support feasible passenger rail expansion and proportional ICA transportation program funding that benefits South Central Kansas. I'm sorry, I don't know if I said those last two bullets were under infrastructure. If you recall, when we were discussing the county legislative platform, you asked me to move three things under the Joint Legislative Platform, and so those items, although you don't see them specifically there, they are encompassed broadly under the housing bullets, the water bullets, and then as well under infrastructure. So enactment of items included in this 2025 Joint Legislative Agenda will help attract and retain jobs, ensure work towards an adequate workforce, and help provide a safe and prosperous place to live and work. And so I'd recommend you adopt the 2025 Joint State Legislative Platform, and I will stand for any questions, and then I'll also just mention again that Chairman and the county manager were there, so they'd also probably be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, very good. Okay, Tanya, thank you for that work. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask a few questions. Just on the outside, let me just say, I'll support this, I'll vote yes. I assume we will adopt this here in a few minutes, and I don't anticipate any, really opportunity for changes, but I do have a couple of questions. In our joint legislative platform, who have been the partners in the past? This is a larger group of organizations. Can we talk about that for just a moment?
Sure. So as I mentioned, WSU was added this year, but my understanding is that these five partners, the five, the county, the chamber, and the city, as well as REEP and GWP, have been part of our joint legislative platform. Am I incorrect in stating that, Tom?
To go back a ways, it was the city, the county, and the chamber. Those are the three core partners. Three or four years ago, REEP came to the meeting, and then WSU was added this year, as Tanya mentioned, so it has grown since. So here's my concern, you know, as we continue to add more organizations, maybe we have broader statements that satisfies the larger group, but I think we're losing some of our focus, and no offense to any of them, they all have very great importance to our state and to our community, but I would just say, you know, WSU's goals and legislative legislation, I would say generally is not necessarily aligned with the county's goals. We have a pretty robust list of things we're trying to do, and to me, you know, this is a progression that continues to happen. I don't know, I don't remember discussion before today about whether this is the, this is the way to go forward with this particular group of people, a group of organizations. To me, I think we're beginning to lose our effectiveness, perhaps, because of the way we're doing this. Also, you mentioned they met in December, so do they have people from all these organizations sat around the table in December? Is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
Do we have any lobbyists from those groups, including the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County? Were they there as well?
They were, Commissioner.
They were.
We had Watkins Public Strategy, and then Marley Carpenter, who represents the city.
And, okay, all right, very good. And then, they only met the one time?
So we had, we staff met prior to that and then kind of put some themes together, but then the larger group met in December.
In the summer?
December.
In December?
Yes.
Okay. As I'm reading this list, and again, it's a fine list, but one of my, you know, we're talking about SMART goals, specific, measurable, you know, achievable, all those types of SMART goals. As I read this list, these are philosophical in nature, they're not, if I had to go write a bill to go do one of these things, I don't know what that is. And that's one of my problems with this list, is, and we've challenged ourselves on our own platform to be that specific, to say, "What specifically are we asking for?", because the legislators don't, are not going to write bills to change legislation unless they know exactly what we're trying to accomplish. And so these are all, start with the word "support." In fact, one of these, about RHID, I think, I would say is the fourth statement down, talks about tax credit options. I don't know what that is exactly, a little concerned about that. I know that we have an affordable housing challenge here in Kansas especially, I think in Sedgwick County, but we have a lot of concerns about RHID we have had in the past, and I don't know that the state is where we need to be on RHID, but I don't know what we're asking for specifically with that statement. I'm a little concerned about that one. Some of the discussion on here, I mean, there are, if these are just general statements saying if something comes up, we kind of like to encourage, you know, job creation, talent recruitment, if something comes up, these are kind of what we would kind of want to see those things, you know, supported. If that's all this is saying, that's what, that's really, that's really kind of all it does say, I suppose. It gives our lobbyists very little guidance. What I would really like to see us do is have specific goal. What one thing would we change this year if we could change it? What would that be exactly? Can we all agree? What's the solution we would advocate for? What statute needs to be created or changed or amended or rescinded or whatever? That's the level of how you become successful. And so again, I'm glad there were lobbyists there, they know this. In fact, I've asked that question, almost exactly that question in front of Jason and Jessica at our legislative meetings, and they have confirmed that is the best way to move forward. So I'll support this today. In fact, I'll make a motion right now to adopt this. I'll make a motion to adopt that, and I plan to vote yes. I have concerns. I think we need to maybe regroup and find out, are we effective in this process? And if we can make some changes going forward, I think we need to have that discussion. All to say that this is a whirlwind of a session. If you haven't, not seen what's happened the last three days, the last two days, it is shocking. There's a budget that's out since Monday. I've been reading the state's budget, and it is massive, and I think we have a chance to get involved in that. But there were literally maybe 100 bills introduced just yesterday alone, and I'm trying to wrap my head around what's going on up there. It's moving very, very fast. And if we don't have, and by the way, in seven weeks, turnaround happens, this counting this week. So after this week, we have six more weeks for turnaround. So if we're going to be successful in getting something through, we've got to start, you have to hit the ground running to, you know, exactly what are we asking for? And I, and again, I'll support this today. I don't think it's going to actually accomplish anything, and I hate to say that, but I think we can do better. We need to have a different conversation about being as specific and focused as we possibly can be to be successful going forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would largely agree with some of Commissioner Howell's comments in regards to, there's different interests represented by these organizations. So if you look at Sedgwick County Government, City of Wichita, the Chamber of Wichita, Greater Wichita Partnership, REEP, Wichita State, each of these organizations have different interests, and I think why, while this is so maybe vague in many regards, is trying to find agreement on some of the details might not be possible on some of the specifics. So I think what this was in the conversation room that day was some of the larger organizations, employers, and some of those that have the largest presence politically in this region, want to make sure that there's some sort of unified voice to the legislature saying, "Hey, these are the topics that we care about deeply, these topics." I don't think there's any assumption that there's going to be a whole lot of bills written specifically, because trying to get everybody on the same page is going to be too difficult. What we do here from Sedgwick County Government with the detail and the level of detail into our legislative platform is really where the bulk of the emphasis is going. I think a lot of this is symbolic in many ways, saying these are the topics that we care about, but the conversation in regards to the specificity, I think, is a worthy conversation. We could certainly talk about what that looks like in coming years. So Commissioner, my turn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you actually, Mr. Chairman, you just clearly stated what I was going to summarize as well. It's, Commissioner Howell points out some good things, the vagueness is there, but I think in the global picture, it shows to Pika that this region is cohesive and getting along and pointing their arrow in overall right direction of, and we each have our individual stuff. For instance, the RHID that you pointed out, I mean, we've already done a policy to control what happens in Sedgwick County at our level on, so there'd be, all these agencies, you know, and I know WSU has specific things they need to accomplish that are not in this. So although it is exactly what Chairman Beatty summarized in a very well way, it's, it does show our unison, which I think is, continues to be somewhat the envy of the rest of the state, that why, why are we, why is this region getting attention? And I'll repeat, that we get the attention because we bring in a lot of new dollars into this state and this region, and so we, it's not like we're asking for stuff. We carry our own weight.
Sure do.
Severely, so, okay.
That's good, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Howell.
I agree with Commissioner Meister, and I think the collaboration and the cohesiveness is absolutely imperative, and if we could wrap those two terms around something specific, I think we'd be more successful because of that connection to other organizations. Let me remind ourselves what we did last year, and Commissioner Beatty, you were a big part of this. We had a number of meetings on the issue of homelessness and MAC funding, multi-agency center funding. In fact, I think the county was the biggest voice in the room. We led and invited legislators and stakeholders to the room, and we conducted about four or five different meetings between September and December, and we actually got it down to a specific ask of the governor for $50 million for infrastructure to create a multi-agency center in South Central Kansas, specifically somewhere to service Wichita. That's how specific it was. And by the way, she put $40 million in her governor's recommended budget, and unfortunately, through the legislative process, that was ultimately stripped back out. But we were at those conference committees, I'm sorry, we were at those committees advocating for the funding, investment funding to create the MAC, and that came out of, again, a very great set of meetings, and I mean, I don't know if it's for a fact, but I believe we invited a lot of our business partners, like Spirit Arrow Systems, for example, and Textron, and of course, these, they're listed on the page here, Wichita Chamber, WSU. We had signature lines on the letter to the governor, I don't know how many signatures we had, Commissioner Beatty, you probably remember.
Over 50.
50. 50 signatures of business leaders and organization leaders that represented, if you will, a cohesive, collaborative, focused request. And you know what we did? We got that money in the governor's budget. We just lost it after that. But we did, we did something really amazing. And that is my, that's my point exactly. If we could get that crisp on what we're asking for, I think when we come together, we will win. We've just got to really work together and then ideally get it down to specific, what are you actually asking for so I can go write that bill? And if we can get to that level, we will, we will be successful. Nothing wrong with this document, it's totally fine. I just don't think it's going to accomplish anything on its own. That's my, that's my concern. Put a lot of work into this. I think the, the joint messaging is a great strategy. I just want to have something specific in 90 days to get it through the, through the process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, sir. Just for clarification, we do have our own legislative agenda still, right? It's not all wrapped up. And I understand legislative agenda is a living document. Is this a living document? And as I say that, I hear the comments and what's going on in Topeka right now. It sounds like everything's fast forward, so it doesn't sound like there's going to be much of an opportunity for change.
Yes, Commissioner, I would consider all platforms a living document. My understanding is that all of the, the partners on this have adopted this platform, so I think we're the last to adopt that. With that said, I don't think there's any reason you can't go back and revise these documents.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioner, is there any other questions? Well, Tanya, thank you for the work that you put into this, and trying to coordinate a lot of different entities is, is not an easy task, so you always do a good job there. Commissioner Howell, you had mentioned you'd like to make a motion?
Chairman, I already did make a motion.
Okay. And I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Thank you, Tanya, appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on January 9th, 2025.
There he is, Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 9th, we have four items that we're seeking your approval. First one is the prevention, early intervention services for the Department of Corrections. And this is to accept the proposals and execute service provider agreements with Center for Behavioral and Academic Research Incorporated, doing business as McCadams Academy, Mental Health Association of South Central Kansas Incorporated, Prime Fit Youth Foundation, and Seventh Direction Incorporated. And that's for the amounts shown for a period of one year, beginning January of this year and ending in December 31st. The next item is the tax foreclosure title search services for various departments. And this recommendation is to extend the original contract term for these tax foreclosure title search services with Security First Title LLC. And that one-year extension will begin March 17th of this year through March 16th of 2026. Next item we have is fire alarm testing and inspection for facilities maintenance. And this is the recommendation to accept the overall low bid from Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP at the rates listed for a contract period of one year with three one-year options to renew. And our final item is the adult detention facility, laundry dryer replacements, and boiler removal for facilities maintenance. And this is a recommendation to accept the quote from RJ Cool Company, doing business as RJ Cool Midwest, option number two, and the amount of $75,000. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, very good. Questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that fourth item, I think you were the presentation, Joe Thomas, but on that fourth, that fourth option there, there is a less expensive option. This is a, a lower bid. I'm just curious, why did we pick the one that's not the lowest bid?
The bid required not just the removal of the equipment, but upon installing the equipment, there was some structural work that needed to be done. So the low bid was an incomplete bid because they did not include the work that would be needed to put the structure back together.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Joe. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendations of Board of Bids and Contracts.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, the motion on the table, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Joe, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoltz County Manager's Office recommend approval of Consent Items E through J on the agenda today.
Okay, Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the Consent Agenda. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, make a motion to approve Consent Items E through J.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business Part Two, Item K, Selection of One Member of the Board of County Commissioners to Service Chair of the Board through January 14th, 2026.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to stand up for this, I think. I don't have a way to do a microphone standing up, though, do I? Not really. Well, I guess let's sit for just a minute. We'll stand up in just a minute. It is my distinct honor and privilege to, to get to make a presentation today. Please bring it up, that'd be great, to make a presentation today. Normally, the pro tem makes the presentation to the chairman. With the change in the election, there is not a pro tem here today, so I guess we get to fight for it. I'll say I'm the senior commissioner by, by tenure, but not by age. You know what, so...
Good point, good point. And not by looks either.
My dad could beat your dad up. It's on. It's on. Don't noise.
It's green now?
Now I know, thank you. I do have more hair, but, you know what, I just wanted to say, a year ago, I think the five commissioners, I should say the four commissioners, had to fight each other to make the nomination for Ryan Beatty. We knew he was going to be an exceptional leader, and he is exceptional. One of the very best, I think, we've ever had. He is kind, he is compassionate, he's a wonderful father and husband, and a good example to everyone. He's a solid Christian, he's a pastor. If you don't know, in fact, sometimes this pastor, pasterness comes out when he makes speeches for the county. If you've ever heard him make a three-point sermon, he happens once in a while. But he's a wonderful leader in so many wonderful ways. He is a, he is popular on a couple of other levels because he's a very successful business owner, and you see him on commercials, and it's a lot of fun to see him there as well. He has a, a lot of staff that he takes care of and is very generous to them. He is a sports figure that can talk sports in a level that I can't even comprehend. So he understands a lot about that. I think he's from KU, is that right?
That's correct.
Well, whatever. I, I won't hold that against him. I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other, but in case you care about that, he is a KU guy. Anyway, you know, this is well deserved. Every year that someone serves as Commissioner Chairman, they get one of these beautiful plaques for their wall to remember what they have done. And he is so deserving of this and so much more. I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership. It's been fun to work alongside you, and I look forward to our future. I think that anytime you sit in this chair, it'll be a good year for Sedgwick County. I am glad to call you a friend and a colleague, and I have huge respect for you. And so with that, I want to just say congratulations to Chairman Ryan Beatty. Thank you for your wonderful service to Sedgwick County.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I say something?
Yeah, please.
Light's not working, so...
Go ahead, Commissioner Meister.
So as the other, as the other member that served with you this past year, everything that Commissioner Howell said is true and valid, and I just want to say you've represented our county, and specifically our county commissioner, our county commission, in a very effective and mutually respective manner this past, this past year. Under, under your chairmanship, we've, you've secured our commission as a, as a body of, of solid representation in this community and solid leadership as a whole body. And you've shown that we are unified most of the time. We have a few, a few speed bumps and hurdles we work through, a lot of them we work through privately, which is really good. So it's been, it's been refreshing year to, to serve as a commissioner under your, under your leadership. So congratulations and looking forward to 2025.
Thank you. Yeah, well, thank you, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Meister. The carryovers from the last commission, I certainly appreciate that. It has been a true honor to be able to serve in this seat in 2024. You know, we got a lot accomplished. There's some policies that got accomplished, there's projects that got accomplished. But I think, and both Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Meister alluded to it, I think the biggest accomplishment for the commission in 2024 was a unified effort. It was a unified accomplishment. As those that know that sit here, it's, the, the chair has a specific role that it accomplishes in the conduction of the meetings, and there's, there's boards assignments, and there's public presentations that are provided. But the work, the metal that's being accomplished happens with five commissioners. And what I'm most proud of in this community for what took place in 2024 was the collaborative efforts. It was the unity. And it was the demonstration of leadership that took place from the, from Sedgwick County. And I'm not just talking about from the chair or the five commission, I'm also talking about from the leadership from, from county departments. I think what you saw in 2024 was a need, significant needs in the community. And I think you saw Sedgwick County take a stand in front to try to shape the outcomes and the trajectory for this community. And, and that's not going to stop. We will continue doing that from the commission and from Sedgwick County Government and the 2,800 employees here and the 46 departments. So I, I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate the honor. Knowing all five of you personally, you know, it's kind of, let's get to work, let's work. Everybody wants to get going, foot on gas, and kind of move forward. But it is nice to be able to stop and pause and to, and to give thanks and to demonstrate thanks for the role that you allowed me to serve in this last year. I would also be amiss to not give public thanks to Pro Tem Sarah Lopez, who served in the role. And she did so during a busy time in her life, too, but she did so honorably. And that's what this is about. Public service is about displaying honor in service and leadership. And what I'm most excited about, not just from 2024, but moving forward, is the opportunity. The opportunity exists in this community to continue demonstrating leadership in a very profound way. And might I just say that I think this community is looking for it? I think they're looking for leadership, and I'm excited that as a commission this year, we're going to step into that space. So thank you again, I appreciate that, and appreciate the opportunity to serve in 2024. Onward we go. We are on Item K, and we are now going to continue to move forward and look towards 2025. So Justin Wagner, would you like to let us know how this is going to work out?
Certainly, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor, pursuant to state law, it's KSA 19-219. The Board of County Commissioners is tasked with, with electing a chair each year. There's a chair pro tem that's also elected each year, and that's your next agenda item. That's not statutorily required, but traditionally, the county's done that for several decades. And essentially, it's a temporary position that replaces the chair in their absence or availability. The, what I'm going to describe as the process, it's been used the last handful of years. Be happy to answer any questions if you would have them. First, again, this item is to select a chair. Any commissioner can make a nomination for a member to serve as chair. There's not a need for a second for somebody to be qualified, and self-nominations are permissible. If there's only one nomination, then the voting could occur by a simple voice vote. If there are multiple nominations, the clerk's office has provided sheets of paper that you could utilize to record your vote for one of the commissioners who's been nominated. And the paper ballots will be provided to the clerk to read out loud and tally the number of votes. This process, we utilize it until you have three commissioners that would gain votes, or a commissioner that would gain three votes to serve as chair. Then you would go through the same process and the next agenda item for chair pro tem. I, again, would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions for Justin on that process? Pretty self-explanatory, pretty easy. Okay, floor is open for nominations. Commissioner Meister?
Yes, I'd like to nominate, for, for all the reasons that you heard the past two minutes, I'd like to nominate Chairman Beatty to remain and serve as chairman again for a second year.
Thank you. Commissioner Bluebaugh?
I did want to make some comments before, and I apologize if I didn't get to. From an outside lens, I think you did an outstanding job showing leadership, displaying, got excited every Wednesday morning, getting to hear your updates, or Tuesday morning on KNSS. So I think you did a great job. But just out of tenure and the time, I would like to make a nomination for Commissioner Howell.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't need to make a nomination, but I do want to make some comments and appreciate the nomination. I want to just say that Jeff and I have talked numerous times before the election and through this time since he's been sworn into his seat, and we've had a couple of conversations about the history of this commission. And I don't, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I do want to explain a few things. And let me just say upfront, I anticipate that Chairman Beatty will be, in fact, reelected as chairman again. And I support him, and I, and I love his service, I love his leadership, and I think he's done a great job, as I've already stated. But I do want to say a couple of things that I think that the commission has, has maybe inadvertently shifted. Our history of how we used to do this into something that's kind of interesting, the phenomenon that continues to happen. Before Chairman Beatty was chairman in 2024, the six years prior to that, the chairmanship was handed back and forth between two commissioners. There's nothing wrong with that, but it was interesting, from my perspective, it just, it just seemed like there was an intent to never want to share that gavel with others on the bench. So between two commissioners, they handed that gavel back and forth four times. And this will be a, a second time for Ryan Beatty. So he will also have a chairmanship back to back. So this will be three commissioners that have had back-to-back chairmanships. If you go back in history, only three times back to 1957 has that happened before these last three. I have history on that. In fact, one of those that did that six times ago was Jack Spratt. That was, that's how long ago we're talking about, the last two years. He was a commissioner, he had, he was chairman twice in a row. So it's a little unusual. I have, I've got data, I guess, because I'm a data guy, I love looking at data. But I think District Five has been underrepresented in the commission, and I think that every commissioner that's elected here has unique ideas that should be heard from a leadership perspective. And I think that to continue to, to do what we're doing right now, it just, it just misses an opportunity. We talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, but we're not really practicing that in this regard. There's a lot of things I could say. One of the reasons I think that this continues to happen is because there has been a lack of knowledge about history and about accomplishments we've done in the past. I was chairman, thankfully, in 2016. It was a great honor, actually. First thing I would say is the sky did not fall. We got through that. In fact, a few really great things happened in 2016. We opened the elephant exhibit and celebrated that, that great accomplishment for Sedgwick County. County. At that time, I recommended a new funding agreement for the zoo, which they apparently did not understand my point. But it would have delivered $12 million additional than what they've received since then. Had they gone down the path that I was hoping they would go down, they would have received another $12 million, but they did not receive. We opened the Reagan Building in 2016, completing a merger, a structural merger between Wichita and Sedgwick County. And we celebrated that opening of that building. By the way, we saved $4 million because we had some leadership on this board that helped us find a way to save some money in that process. In 2016, we brokered the deal with Wichita on the Law Enforcement Training Center. So we have functional consolidation between law enforcement training for Wichita and Sedgwick County. What you may not remember is that during that same discussion, I raised the issue of fire training, because we work with firefighters on the streets. Wichita and Sedgwick County respond to the same fires, and they have to work together. And I said, you know, Wichita has this beautiful training center, which they paid for. Could we pay our way into that and be functionally consolidated? And we offered that. And there was a lot of consternation. I think Wichita was not as interested as we were. Nevertheless, we wrote some language in there to make the LETC go forward. We, we caused the functional consolidation of fire training in the very same contract that created the LETC. Unfortunately, I don't think the joint training has really happened the way I envisioned it, even to this day. So we have some opportunities on fire training still. But the structure has been set up through, through an agreement we passed in 2016. In 2016, for a year, we, we held up on the community health assessment, as well as the comprehensive plan, known as the Community Investment Plan. As chairman, my first month I was on this bench, we pushed both those initiatives through the bench, through the bench. And some of my colleagues didn't appreciate that very much. But those were three issue votes. And you know what? I'm still proud of the fact that I led on those two issues. And I was in the majority on those two votes. I have led this commission through the, again, by the way, I want to say thank you to Chairman, Chairman Commissioner Meitzner, for two of the hardest years on this, on this bench. He was chairman in 2020 and 2021, if I have that right. That's correct. He's been leadership four times in the six years he's been here. Three times as chairman and one time as pro tem. But he was chairman in some of the hardest, most difficult policymaking in the history of this commission. And I was grateful for his leadership. Nevertheless, he and I disagreed on a few things. And I would say that I took the side that was advocating more for the people and the community. I was less interested in government control, more interested in education and resource provision, like PPE and immunizations. In fact, I was tenacious in taking the lead, if you will, and I think my colleagues would agree with me, tenacious in taking the lead and creating the COVID testing lab over at Spirit Air Systems that was under the control of Wichita State University. It was a $4 million investment, and we, we led. By the way, that was, the process was incredibly complex, and I took the opportunity to lead that effort forward. And I think because we were so aggressive, we did save lives. During my time as commissioner, we have solved the fire insolvency, the budget insolvency that we were facing back when I first became a commissioner. In three of the years I've been on this bench, I have led trying to get the fire pay back where I believe it needs to be. And I have had, these have been split, split votes. But for three of the years, I want to thank a couple of my colleagues that are no longer on this bench. But we passed, three times, we passed initiatives to address fire pay, which I think was absolutely critical. And we got that done. I also worked on the EMS crisis, both before it happened, and I think as it was ongoing to get us back out of that mess. I was very engaged. It was not a fun time. So to the extent that people say I'm controversial, and, and they don't know what I'm going to do, that may be true. All these things I've mentioned, for the most part, were not easy things. But they were very important. And I don't regret being involved in any of those things I was involved in. I could go on. There's so much more I could talk about. I think that I'm glad, I'm going to vote for myself today, just simply out of principle. I actually do support Ryan Beatty as chair again as well. I cannot be chair and be happy. I don't have to be chair. I can lead from my seat, not being chair. By the way, all of us can lead from our seats by not being chair. We can't do anything without our colleagues. Nobody gets the glory on their own. Nobody does it by themselves. And all of us have the ability to lead this commission. But I understand that he is likely to be the chairman, and that's okay. I'm okay with that. I just want to set the record straight to anybody after the things that the sky, the sky was falling in 2016. It did not fall. I've been here a while. I know some things. I've got some stuff done, and I'm very proud of my record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Howell, I appreciate that. And Commissioner Meitzner, I appreciate the nomination. Just a couple of comments. And this is the one part, welcome. This is the one part that is, it's not an easy part, the discussions. These discussions happen for a few weeks leading up to this. Commissioner Howell and I, and I think he knows, I hope you know how much I truly appreciate you and your opinions and your respect and your intellect and your engagement and the things you have done. I've told you, and I've told people that have said that Commissioner Howell does have a reputation, but I think he's largely misunderstood in many ways.
Thank you.
I know him. I know his heart. And I know what he intends to do. And I know what he wants to accomplish. And I appreciate his, I appreciate the camaraderie, but I appreciate the friendship. I appreciate your principles. I appreciate you in many, many ways. And we talk about the chair, and I think this conversation is likely going to continue on throughout the rest of this year, of what does this really represent? I think there's different opinions of what the chair role represents. Some people think that it's just conducting a meeting. Other people think that it's actual, you know, the leadership from the commission represents something in the community. The answer is likely something in the middle. What I hope to accomplish, if I'm able to receive the nod, the go-ahead nod today, is I think that we're in a pivotal season in Sedgwick County and the entire region. And I do think, as I said prior, that I think our body, our institution of government is going to be tasked to lead the efforts, that we are going to have to shape the efforts, that the vision that we have, where that we're going in this community will largely be conducted on behalf of Sedgwick County government and our influence. And I have been unashamed and unabashed in saying what my vision is for this community is I think we have to modernize local government. I think the current system, we are doing exceptionally well in the current system. But what the community is asking us is going to require a pivot. It will require a pivot, and we're the ones that are going to have to shape that pivot and write what that pivot looks like. And I am, I'm asking for support because I want to help with the vision casting in this community of what it looks like to modernize local government. We need to eliminate redundancies. We need more shared services. We have to have relational capital with not just the city of Wichita, but that 19 other cities in the county and the state, and our federal delegation of what it looks like to modernize and move us forward, not just for what it looks like in 2025, but what this county and region will look like in 2025, 50 years. I believe that in 2025, that we're going to lay a foundation that will, that will generationally influence this community. And I'm asking for support because I want to be on the forefront of helping to shape that. Commissioner Howell is right. Every commissioner has an opportunity to take the lead, not just for their district, for the community. And I'm grateful because everyone up here has a loud voice, and they use their voice in a constructive manner. And I pledge that I'll make sure that every single commissioner has a fair voice in the shaping of these things and is at the table. It's not a one-person effort. But this county is going to do some things this year, and we're going to do some big things this year. And we're going to shape the outcomes in this community, and it's going to come from this commission. So I appreciate you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Meitzner, I appreciate the nomination. I appreciate being able to work with two new commissioners as well. Any other nominations? Okay. Go ahead and cast a vote, and then we'll hand that in to the county clerk. Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead and read it.
Ryan Beatty. Ryan Beatty. Commissioner Howell.
Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor. Just to avoid any, I realize this is, this is intended not to be a secret ballot, to avoid any concerns of that. I would ask that the voter be read first, and then who they voted for. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell votes for Howell. Commissioner Bluebaugh votes for Commissioner Howell. Chairman Beatty votes for Chairman Beatty. Commissioner Meitzner votes for Chairman Beatty. And Commissioner Wise votes for Commissioner, Chairman Beatty.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate the opportunity to serve in this role again. There's lots of work to be done. I'm encouraged to do it. So thank you. Okay. Justin Wagner, next up is?
Actually, I think I defer to the clerk to read the agenda item, Chairman, if that's all right, I think.
So pro tem, but the point was being that it's the same process.
Yes.
We're going to go through the same process for pro tem.
That's right.
On item, Madam Clerk, when I call it, I just want the commission to be aware that it is the exact same process. There'll be a nominee. There does not need to be a second. We'll make a paper ballot if there's multiple nominations. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as the chair pro tem of the board through January 14th, 2026.
Okay. I'd like to make a nomination for Pete Meitzner. I'm going to make this nomination for a couple of reasons. The biggest reason I'm making this nomination is exactly why I said what I said previously, is one of the biggest things we're going to have to accomplish is via relationship and collaboration. We have two commissioners that are on the bench now that had extensive experience at the city of Wichita, which is our biggest partner here in this region. Some of the things that we want to accomplish collectively, from the discussion of consolidation of departments and service departments, from more shared services, from more collective reach into the community, is going to require a relationship with the city of Wichita. And I think as a commission, with the experience that Commissioner Bluebaugh has and Commissioner Meitzner has coming from the city of Wichita, I am, I am encouraged that having people in leadership of that type of experience is going to be beneficial to Sedgwick County. So I'd like to make a nomination for Pete Meitzner as pro tem. Other nominations. Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, based on 14 years of elected office, and his also, he was a vice mayor in Wichita for two years during his time that he was there. He has great elected experience. He also has great relationships with people at the city. I think it's very reasonable to nominate Commissioner Bluebaugh for pro tem. And again, I support Commissioner Meitzner as well, but this will be, if he's successful, this will be his fifth year in seven years of service to be on a leadership team. He was pro tem once and chairman three times in his last six years. This will make a second time as pro tem. So out of seven years of service, he will have been leadership five times if he is ultimately selected as pro tem. I think we need to have balance. And I think, again, I think that Commissioner Bluebaugh has earned it, and I would like to make his nomination. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Very good. I have two nominations. Any other nominations? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote.
Commissioner Meitzner votes for Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty votes for Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Bluebaugh votes for Commissioner Bluebaugh. And Commissioner Howell votes for Commissioner Bluebaugh. Commissioner Wise votes for Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay, that's settled. Congratulations, Commissioner Meitzner, pro tem.
Thank you. Thank you. And as many of you know, especially in the staff and others in the community know, that I work hard, a lot of times behind the scenes, in a, in a respectful way to help navigate what might be the challenge for, for our commission and our county and our community. And as the pro tem, I will, I will be more visible than, than the past. But I will, I will support and mutual respect for my fellow commissioners and mutual respect for the, for the entire community. So thank you, and I'm honored to, to be that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Meitzner. Okay. Any receiving files? Are we good to move forward?
I think you're good, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, very good. We, time to get to work. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, any committee reports that you'd like to discuss publicly?
Yeah.
Commissioner Meitzner.
That's right. Under other, sorry.
Okay. I will make note that one of the things that we do in the first couple of weeks is we, we make new committee assignments with the commission. And there's several boards that we all serve on. Those discussions will be ongoing, and we'll be able to announce here in the next few weeks at a commission meeting where everybody's assignments are going to be in the boards that they serve on. Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything to report under other?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just want to congratulate again, past Sunday, the swearing in of our two commissioners. That was a wonderful event. My wife was out of town, and she was texting me, said, is, is anybody here? And I said, yeah, every row was packed. So I think the community cared a lot about, about your being sworn in. I know a lot of them were friends and family, but, but there was a lot of people in the community here coming out on a Sunday afternoon to, to show their support. And I think that's admirable and should be good for you to know that, at least out of the blocks, you've got a full-packed house that was supporting you. So I want to, again, congratulate you both and welcome you. And the other thing I think is really important, last Friday, I was able to visit the MAC, the multi-agency center that's doing the, the winter shelter right now, which eventually, I think at the end, March 31st or April 1st, will be the handoff to the official MAC and the Board of the MAC and all that. But it was, it was 45 minutes, and it was incredibly eye-opening for me. I'm around a lot of that in the fact that I, I serve, have for 10-plus years at the Lord's Diner. So I am around those that are food-challenged and homeless and maybe have some issues, you know, families that are hungry, but also those that have maybe mental or, or some kind of abuse issues. And so I went in with open eyes, but I have that little bit of background, so I'm not claiming to be an expert in it at all. But I was very impressed with how Don Shepler and Humankind is running this, or are running this. There's a sense of security, organization, things that I didn't even think about that they're doing that I thought, oh, man, that's really good. It was availability to say, are we, I guess I'll say 80, 90%, the bones of that building and the bones of that operation are really solid. And I think they're, they're helping our community in whole as a, as we address this homeless. Before, we'd never had a building. We had everybody saying, give us a plan, give us a this, give us a that, and we'll help support it. Well, now we have that. We have the bones of a, of a good campus. And I think it's being run efficiently. And I think that in the near future, maybe this next couple of months, or maybe for sure this year, we as a commission probably will be challenged by issues around that.
Yeah.
Maybe as simple as locating some com care support there, or could be anything else that, that, that that campus may need our support, even if it's in Topeka or whatever. So I just ask that, our, I've talked to a few of our county staff managers to, to please put that on your list to take a tour so you can understand it. And because we will be the final say in a lot of cases, if things happen to it, if things happen. So please honor the invite and take 45 minutes and walk through that from start to finish. And I think it'll be very helpful for us as we, as we go forward, working on this, this issue. So thanks for letting me say a little more than I had planned to on that. But it's, it's a passion that I think we're in, we're in, we're in it. We're knee-deep in it. We're not going to get out of it yet. So anyway.
Big project. Lot of progress being made in that space. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things here. I want to say congratulations to both you and Commissioner Meitzner for being able to lead or commission this next year. I know I made a lot of comments. And again, behind those comments, I want you to know, I absolutely support your, your role. And I want to make sure we stay, stay effective and close. And there's no offense whatsoever. I'm totally cool. And we can work together on whatever is important to both each commissioner on the bench. I want to do my very best to be supportive and to help us move this community forward. So I want you to, I just want to say, I know I said a lot of things there, but in no way diminishes my, my absolute support for both of you. Okay?
Okay.
Second of all, I want to just say congratulations to both Jeff and Stephanie for being on this bench. I think Commissioner Meitzner was absolutely right. Last Sunday was, was great to see so much support from the community. And it's hard to become a commissioner. This is not an easy job. It's a, it takes more of your life than you can probably imagine. But both these folks are here to serve, and there's a long road to get here. And I'm so proud of both of you.
Yeah.
And I'm really excited about working with you going forward. I wanted to say also, last, I think it was last Thursday, or last week at least, we had a celebration in Trust Bank Arena, hitting its 15th year anniversary. That's a big milestone for this community. If you remember, remember how that came to be. They actually opened that. I guess it was a kind of interesting weather the day they opened that. Their opening celebration was another interesting day. But we had snow and ice coming down while we were celebrating the 15th year. AJ's done a great job, and there's a lot to celebrate with that facility in our community. And I was glad to just make a note that 15 years is quite the accomplishment. And it's a beautiful facility. And so I wanted to highlight that. And by the way, that was built with a bond-ish, actually, a sales tax initiative, that we saved the money up before they put a shovel in the ground. It's unbelievable that we built something that big and that magnificent without any bonded debt.
That's right.
I also, last Friday, got to, I got to tour the bio nutrient I also, last Friday, got to, I got to tour the bio-nutrient removal plant down south. This is where most of the downstream water from all of our homes and businesses goes down south. About 80% of Wichita gets their services down that way. They're investing hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars to upgrade that plant, and it's in full swing. It was impressive to see the project. I want to say thank you to Gary Jansen, the City of Wichita, Mike Hoheisel, Councilmember Hoheisel, for inviting me to that great experience, to see what's going on down there, and it is moving forward very quickly. And so we're going to have a much better plant down south, and one of the things they talked about was 26 million gallons of water a day that goes into the river, it's basically cleaned up, it's ready to be used again, and that water goes downstream, and we pull 50 million gallons out of our upstream Cheney Reservoir on a daily basis, and so we might need to consider a way to connect the down to the up, and of course, it'll be clean and great for drinking, believe it or not. Water has been used somewhere else before we got to use it, all water is like that. So it's a science, and there's a topic or discussion that has to happen on exactly how this community is going to do that. Wichita is on top of it, and they are leading a great two projects, both the water treatment facility, as well as being our plant down south. We have some opportunities as a community to collaborate and find out if there's a way we can help solve that problem. And then finally, I just wanted to say that on my, each commissioner has a webpage, if you go to sedgwickcounty.org, and you go to government, and go down to commissioners, you'll see five commissioners shown there, and there's all kinds of information about the commissioners. To click on individual commissioners, you can find out information about each commissioner. On my personal page there, I have posted 43 events in 2025 where I plan to provide constituent, resident, citizen engagement opportunities. And some of these are informal, some of them are formal. In fact, three of these are going to be District Citizens Town Hall. So Citizens Town Hall, three times in my district next year, already scheduled. So I'll continue talking about this, but if you're interested in putting those on your calendar, there are 43 opportunities. One of those actually was last week, or actually this week already, already passed, so there's 42 left, and I would like to engage the citizens and people, businesses, in any way I possibly can. So please just go look at those webpages. If you don't sign up for our newsletters, there's a place to sign up for newsletters, this will be in my newsletter as well. Mr. Chairman, thanks for the chance to speak.
Yep. And I'll just close out by saying I want to wish our legislative partners best of luck in this upcoming session. They started on Monday. Obviously, we engage them quite a bit through our legislative platform, but these are discussions and this relationship with our state partners is really pretty deep here from Sedgwick County Government. As many of you know, a county is a political subdivision of the state, so a lot of the things in the partnerships are very valuable and important with the state. They have a lot they're going to be talking about, property taxes, issues of water, and other really, really important issues. So I just want to publicly, from the bench, wish our legislative partners, particularly the South Central delegation and the leadership within the South Central delegation, to wish them the best of luck this year, and that we look forward to being able to work with them as we contend for the issues that impact Sedgwick County. We're looking forward to the many discussions we're going to have over the next 90 to 100 days, so best of luck to our partners there. Commissioners, anything else that needs to come up for the bench? Okay, it's been a productive day, new commission seated, it's going to be a big year. Appreciate everybody being here today. This meeting is now adjourned.